Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're in the afternoon session of April 10th. Our next agenda item is not an actual item. This is just an update on commissioner boards and committees. I don't know who wants to go first. Again, if nobody does it.
Well, Bart, I'm gonna pull the spreadsheet.
The only one I can go for it this week, I met with the Waterways Board. Had a real good meeting with them. They had a question on the water resource plan. Didn't know whether that was out yet or not.
The water resource plan?
I don't know. That's just, I wrote it down because I wasn't familiar with it. Kind of knew at this game.
Water Resources deals with water rights and that kind of stuff. I don't know.
They might have been referring to the use plan, the Waterways Use Plan.
Waterways Management Plan?
Management Plan, excuse me.
That might have been what they were talking about.
The Waterways Management Plan has been adopted, but is going to be incorporated into our comprehensive plan. McCall adopted it, but it doesn't change anything. Alls it is is a guiding document. We will have to go in and change all of the ordinances that we want changed to upgrade to what we want them to become. But we're adopting it into the comprehensive plan first as the very first step. So it's a planning and zoning right now for adoption.
So that's what they were talking about then. The other piece that they weren't sure, and that was calling from Jolly, was being a Waterways Committee. How far can they reach out is, because they oversee the lakes. They didn't realize, can we, because we got to end of discussion. I said, well, Waterways is our rivers also. And they said, well, we just didn't know how far out they had authority to work in. They were, they were a little questioning on that piece.
Been an ongoing conversation, and I think it's a good one to have. But they get their, their, one of their funding mechanisms is the Coast Guard funds, which is only on the water bodies where there's boating allowed. Our Waterways don't allow boating for the most part. But I've always asked the question, you know, some of those same questions. What is their, what's their mission? What is their bylaws? What are their goals? And so far, to my knowledge, we have never done bylaws or mission statement for them. So what is their?
They just did a bylaw. I read it, but they were gonna get it and take it by Brian and run it by him. But they, they had it all written up and I read it. And it was pretty generic, didn't say a whole lot as far as description of what we do, what we're over.
We have to have a Waterways Management Committee because that's by statute. We have to have an oversight body for those funds that we receive. That's just one of the things. But I think they receive other funding where it doesn't restrict.
Well, and then as far as, as far as the rivers, there's a difference between a river and a navigable. You can put a boat on it like the Payette River. But you can't go up like Big Creek or Mid Creek or something like that because they're just not big enough. But there's, there was talk in the past about, okay, can we do like non-motorized? Can we recommend Barton Road up to Cascade be non-motorized for the fishermen, the drift boats? Because we used to have problems with jet boats. Can we put her up there in the past?
Oh, we got those mini jet boats that can, that can run in a puddle.
And I think that might be something we could explore with the committee. I know they talked about the river from McCall up to Little Lake. That's all non-motorized. It's very popular, you know, that kind of stuff. But I don't think they should be regulating things that are not navigable. That makes sense.
And they just didn't have that parameters in their scope of, of coverage.
Well, we've listed like lots of sites near Smiley Bridge and some of those places for boat launching, but that is not the same money as the Coast Guard stuff. And so it's really, that's all through grants. And we've talked, you know, maybe they could be involved with the Barton Put-in and help with some of that. And that's not really their business. They're more votable.
But that's only one source of funding. And that's what Ed had just gotten into the whole conversation about what are their funding mechanisms? Because not all of them have that much restriction put upon them. So I think they do whatever we ask them to do. I mean, they're advisory committee. They have to be in place because of the Coast Guard funding. But that's like 30% of their funding, I think, or 40%. There's a lot of money in there that don't have anything to do with that.
I think it's more than that, isn't it? Coast Guard is pretty.
Coast Guard is very minimal.
Yeah.
Very minimal, the amount that they get from the Coast Guard. The majority of the.
Boat licenses.
Is voter registration fees.
Yeah, and that's what they told me. Most of theirs comes from that.
So it might be something that they.
And it comes to us the same way. The Coast Guard money actually goes to IDPR. And then IDPR distributes that money. So to determine how much Valley County gets in Coast Guard money, it would be, need to be determined by departments, Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation.
And IDPR might be a conversation starter, you know? Go out and find out what other boating advisory committees, you know, other Waterways Management Committees are doing throughout the state. What is it they would like to do? I think that they could be a lot more helpful than they are. I think we've put them inside of a box and this is what your job is. I, I just don't know enough about it. I've asked that question.
And they, and they just didn't know. You know, they were asking me and I said, well, I can, all I can do is ask the questions.
Well, me, to, to me, their most important function is assist the Sheriff's Department with all the boating buoys.
Oh, absolutely.
Backs, patrols, all that stuff. That was their main function.
We had, I mean, it was really good conversation we had and, you know, the different parks and recs in the city and all these guys, you know, spoke. We were talking. And I was pushing them a little bit to look down the road 10 years, 20 years. What are these lakes gonna look like usage-wise? I said, you guys wanna be looking at that? Do you wanna put in a whole new, you know, a boat ramp with a lot of parking? Somewhere else on some of these lakes? I mean, and I think I was pushing their buttons a little bit there, but it's like, you need to look down the road.
And I think there's, that's an even greater, greater opportunity in Cascade because it's Bureau ground versus private ground in most, in most of that lake. So they'd have to find some public land in order to expand that, you know, that facility, that use. But Cascade has huge potential, not only for boat launches, but for campgrounds. We should have campgrounds all the way around that thing as far as I'm concerned. But you can't talk to Bureau to do it.
But also what about Worm Lake? You know, I mean, there's lots of opportunity at Worm Lake, other water bodies, Deadwood. We don't ever touch those types of deals, but I think it's an ongoing conversation. I'd ask them, what do you want to do? Give us a mission statement. You know, they're our advisory council. They'll do whatever we ask them to do, but.
Okay. I'll bring those things up at the next meeting.
And you might ask Ed. Ed had done a lot of research, had talked to IDPR about some of those things. He has a lot of background because he did spend the time to research a lot of that.
Okay.
You know, how do you feel about the Payette Boise Coalition? Have you been attending those? Have they been worth attending?
I liked the Payette one. Boise, I haven't been to one of those yet. Boise, the Payette one, I enjoyed it. It was a lot. Lot of people there. And I sit next to Larry and he, he, he's good information because I'm always asking him questions about what's going on. So I like listen to what, you know, information, the experience he has under his belt. Because you listen to those guys and this is what we want to do. And Larry said, no, we can't be doing that. So I'm, I'm picking up from him of, you know, what's our responsibility at the county? Okay, how can we push back on some of this?
Well, and you know, our original intent was to promote timber sales and some income and some management. And if there's some recreation opportunities, let's develop those. And, and to me, it was interesting because there's more people involved than the Payette and the Boise, but the Boise is actually doing work, actually logging and, you know, fire mitigation. And they did quite a bit of work around Sage Hand for more increased campgrounds and that kind of stuff. But now it's a lack of leadership. Over here at the Ranger District, everything is just stopped.
Didn't they just hire, did they hire somebody?
I think Larry said they hired somebody, but I haven't met anybody yet.
I think they've just hired somebody.
They've been without Ranger over there for a while?
Remember Jake Stromeyer? Oh, Jake was their last Ranger and he moved over to Sautus.
There was an intrum. It's always hard to deal with intrums. And that's what we deal with on the Forest Service up here all the time. They're constant, have constant rotation.
I remember when Randy was in there, he was in there for 12 years before he moved to Corralane. Be a good friend and he was awesome. Why they don't stick around now? Well, yeah, so I'm, I'll be at the next one because Larry was, so he's gonna be gone, so.
Well, and it's good to rely on the folks who've been going there for a while. Like this, Larry knows the history and all that kind of stuff. And it's all historical kind of.
Oh, yeah. And I've, I've met the guy that was EC-ing it, RMC-ing the thing. And seemed like a nice guy and got his contact information, everything. So, yeah, I just, I got a lot to learn.
You do.
We all do.
You'll get there and you'll be running for reelection. Winter Rec Forum or the Fair Board? I think you went to the Fair Board one. Did you get to theirs?
Yeah, they, it's, right now, it's just waiting on snow to get away so we can look at the, can see how much they're gonna spend there on this bodeo fence and the leechers. Those are two number one items they want. And power out in, not sure about the power situation. Not sure if it's for concessions, they needed more power out in the yard or something? I don't know.
Well, the, there is power out there that's been wired into the poles, but it's not enough if you get a lot of concessioners. They start popping fuses.
Right.
So I talked about, well, we need to put in 12 gauge or 10 gauge or something heavier going out there. They didn't put in heavy enough stuff.
Right.
They did job boxes last year and then I thought that worked pretty well, but I don't know what their new request is.
I don't, I don't know. They, they said until we get the snow out of the way, we're physically see what the heck's going on. But you see them going down there. Another month we'll have most snow gone, I hope.
Could be gone by the end of the day.
It could be. My wife said, we're gonna be in the 60s here the first far this week, so. Emery.
So YCAP, we are having an employee turnover there. So we have, we have a new executive director that we are going to be hiring and a new chief financial officer that we'll be hiring. Lots of things happening in that arena. It's taken a lot of time and effort. We're doing some legal work, so it's a little bit of a challenge right now.
Before you move off of that. I got a call from Paula Foudre. Paula used to work for YCAP for years. And she said, there's a grant that we have to apply for by like next week for $3,000 food, emergency food, something grant. And normally they do that at YCAP, but nobody's done it this year.
Don't know if that is their focus. I don't know.
I don't either, but I thought I will mention it to you.
Absolutely.
See if there's maybe something Kinsey can do or something. But they use that a lot to supplement their own food bank, so to speak.
I will call and ask Carrie or Beth about that. I did do this Dibment Gold Collaborative last time. They are, you know, again, this is our last opportunity to try and get anything in writing. And so I'm gonna push a little harder to figure out what it is that we should be doing. They're still meeting monthly. We should have something in place, but I definitely want to make sure that we have in paper somewhere that what we're doing.
You talking about what we were talking with Jeff about?
Perpetual stuff, yeah.
So we're just gonna wait until we have that meeting with them?
Yeah, I'll keep you up to date. I'm not certain at this moment in time where we're at. I mean, we're a cooperating agency, which means that we have greater input than the public does. So we need to continue to sit on that board and figure out what it is that we, we need.
Is there any reason they can't come and do a monthly update presentation or quarterly update presentation to us?
Well, we gotta do a similar invitation.
They, they can't speak to the approval because it's not done yet.
Right.
And so there may be some things they can't. I don't know, yeah. But we, all you gotta do is ask people to come in. I mean, usually everybody's great.
And I think for us, we need to approach them as a group, as one. We can't, you know, we can't be.
I agree.
When we start having those interviews up at their office about things we wanted, my first thing is, I want you to pay the state party. Johnson Creek, oh no, we're not gonna do that.
I'd ask them the same thing.
And I'll go, well, we would really like you to do that. And no, this is our plan. This is what we're gonna do. And so there was some hairs crossed right then. And I would really like to know how much work this is gonna throw on our planning and zoning? Because every house, every structure out there is gonna have a CUP.
Most of it, well, and we can ask those questions.
Yeah.
And it doesn't think it's gonna be a bunch because they're doing man camps. So that will be, you know, one deal.
Is that example of CUP, a man camp?
No, they'll have to have a CUP for the man camp. But yeah, but I don't think there'll be individual houses, but.
They're gonna start holding stuff here right away. Where are those people gonna stay back?
Are those structures already in place up there?
There are some.
A few.
A few, but not much. So yeah, so yeah, it would be good to have an update, but. And I agree with you. I think we need to know more about infrastructure conversations because this is our time to get it in writing and make it mandatory.
Well, I'm really big about, we're gonna do a big bond for these roads. And after you're all said and done, somebody comes back in and fixes it from here to Landmark. Because that, I know that Big Creek and, and Worm Lake, somebody are gonna get devastated with those big heavy trucks.
Oh, sure they are.
And it's not up to the taxpayer to fix.
And that's, you know, that's where the contract and the bonding.
That's where parametrics will kick in.
They got, yeah, they gotta make sure.
Come back in and lay three inch layer on top of all of that to get it smooth again. How much is that gonna cost? $25 million and we need a bond for $25 million?
Sure, absolutely.
Something like that.
That's, that's the kind of information I'm talking about. If they, just give, give us updated because this is fixing to take off and go.
I would reach out probably, Belinda would be our contact point. See if she can get some meetings set up in here. Economic Development Council. Unfortunately, we still are working on this. Trying to figure out a daycare grant for the building over here and how we improve that. It's a large ask. It's about a $600,000 investment. And so, you know, yeah, we have to come up with a lot of money in order to do that. So McKenzie's still working on it, you know.
You're not talking about another, another building, are you?
No, just the improvements over there are gonna take.
Just the improvements for that one?
And even upgrade it just for the seniors is going to be a big ask and a big upgrade. So she's working on grants, so continue to work on that. Some good news, the broadband conversation. The state has received their $125 million. We are going to look at doing a project, so more to follow. Not ready to go primetime with it yet, but there will be a conversation about how Valley County can participate with iron on a broadband expansion project and specific request for us to do that. So really excited about some opportunities there.
So what, what's our responsibilities on that? I mean, the $125 million covers that, the getting the line point A to point B?
Um, no, that's actually the iron project. We have no responsibility with that. They're gonna bring that through here. They received the grant already for that. There's an additional $125 million for, so that would be called the mid mile, which is kind of the freeway for broadband. Now, the last mile is where you take it from that huge broadband into the neighborhoods.
The neighborhoods, okay.
And so that is the project we're gonna work on. Spend some time on Friday on that conversation about where we can go, where we should go to make an, an impact there.
Is this something that Frontier's gonna jump in on too?
They're trying. Frontier got in big trouble with the Idaho Broadband Group because they made statements that were not true. So basically, they were trying to say, we got everybody covered. FCC maps are saying we got everybody covered and that's not true. So the broadband group absolutely slapped them down hard last week at a broadband coalition meeting. So that was a good thing, you know? They know they're gonna be held accountable, same thing with Sparklight. So if we can get that, that middle mile loop in here, we will have 20 ISPs, the Internet Service Providers. We'll have 20 of them coming into this area, being able to allow broadband at half the cost that we can get it at now and 10 times, 100 times the amount of speed that we currently have.
Awesome.
It's just gonna be a huge, huge deal.
Won't need Elon Musk.
No, well, Elon Musk has, they have capacity issues with that too. The more people go on Starlink, the slower the service is. And this would be, right now, Starlink's 300 download speed. This would be 1,000 download speed for half the cost.
Wow.
So.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, it would be a huge opportunity. So we continue to work on broadband with the EDC Housing. We continue to work on housing. Lindsay Harris, the EDC Executive Director, also serves on the Housing Trust. So we are working on getting everything in the ground with that Housing Trust. Brian's still working on our MOU, so we will have that update soon. I think on the EDC, that's probably it. Let's see, what else am I working on? So the SRS conversation is still a national conversation. So SRS has been approved. This year, we know what our funding will be. We'll get about 1.2 million. Next year, we'll get about 1.2 million. But what they did in the last legislation is they authorized it through two more years. They just haven't funded those last two years. But we know what this year is, what next year is. It's after that that we're, we know it will be funded in some fashion, we hope anyway. We just don't know what it would be.
Can you know what Pilt is, what it does, what it's used for? Explain to me better what SRS is.
So payment, Pilt is property taxes in lieu of property taxes. They don't pay those. We used to be able to harvest the timber off the National Forest Grounds and we received 25% of that income. They don't give us that income anymore. But what they did is go in, put legislation in in about the year 2000 that says, instead of giving you part of those proceeds, we will authorize secure rural schools funding every year and pay you that. What we used to get, I think the top we got was about $4 million. It's gone down as far as $75,000. So every year, we fight for our share of those SRS dollars that were authorized through legislation, guaranteed through legislation. But they want us to someday reduce that income so we're not reliant on it anymore. And yet, they continue to take forest harvest without paying us for it.
Without paying us for it.
Yeah, they're taking our natural resources out of the county. This is their, this is how we're doing that.
That's some of the discussion I've been having when we were there in that pit, Forests Coalition. I asked that question. I said, they, they were all happy. We've taken out 800 loads in the last two months. I said, well, where's the money coming from that you're selling this lumber for? Or is it coming back to the counties? Well, we're, we're working on that.
Well, that's part of the GNA conversation.
Yeah.
We will continue to have that ongoing conversation. The, we had our first Recreation Strategic Planning Group meeting, which was really a great meeting. Jeff Masu is president, April Whitney is vice president. Not certain who's the treasurer yet, but they have a lot of great innovative ideas. So I think that that's gonna be a really exciting outcome for putting that in place. I'm really happy about that. The rest of mine are pretty much state and federal. I just want to put on record, well, two things. Workforce Development Council, the state of Idaho. There is $50 million in funding that's just been authorized for those $5,000 grants for kids that are in school that identify a career path that will actually be in certified technical education. So these are ways that our kids can go out and actually find jobs, labor force, you know, in the trades. They can also use them for certain things within the colleges. So there's going to be a huge educational component coming up. This starts July 1st. So between now and then, I'll get you guys all the information we can probably, or possibly get you the large lift in a very short window of time. We did just do interviewing on Friday for whoever is going to take those funds forward and put apprenticeships and mentorships in place with this also.
Is that part of that launch? That is part of that launch system?
Well, I'm part of it, yes.
Yeah.
The rest of it is a brand new program. Workforce Development Council has a lot going on. I'll try and keep you guys up to date because you're gonna get a lot of questions starting in July. And then I sat on the legislative meeting, or IAC's Legislative Group this year. Man, next year is gonna be, I mean, this year, they kind of introduced a lot of legislation, lots of controversy. They were so new that not a lot came of it. But moving forward, I think we're gonna have, the next few years in legislative are, are gonna be pretty intense. And I just want to put on record, so I am co-chairing that National Housing Conversation. I do have a meeting in Dallas in May and also going to National Conference in July. That is all paid for by the National Association of Counties. The county is not paying for any of that. But the work product that's gonna come from that is going to be fabulous. We've been having Zoom meetings and conversations and lots of great ideas are coming back. So I'm very excited about what that looks like moving forward, but. All right, El.
Cool. Well done. Been a busy girl. Um, I'll try and make a brief Doug. As you know, I'm on the magistrate commission and so is Doug. And we picked a new judge for, what, she can?
Yes, sir.
What, two weeks ago, three weeks ago? That went very well. I think there's another one coming up here, probably the end of this month or first of next month for another magistrate down in Ada County. I'm hoping to get Ada County satisfied so that Adam, our judge, would can spend more time here in Valley County. He spends a lot of time down there seeing cases, but that's going really well. Road Advisory Committee, we had some pretty interesting meetings the last couple of meetings. I don't think those guys are really ready yet to go forward with any kind of a levy or any of that. They're still trying to perfect just management, management skills. And, and as you guys know, it got kind of heated last time. And so Oki's helping me. We're kinda, kinda write a rebuttal letter on some of the concerns they have. Kind of try and bring that back to the middle again. I attended the All Hazard Mitigation Plan last week, Donlin Fire, and that is going really well. We've got, we went through 21 different hazards that we have and redefined them. Some of them we took off the list, a couple we added on. That document is in process. And once it's completed, that allows us to apply for FEMA funding for any of our major catastrophes and keeps us in that loop for that funding. But that's going very well. LAPC, same thing. We're gonna have another LAPC here. I think it's next, next week. No, it's following week.
Is that the EMS Board?
No, that's on EMS. LAPC's basically its communications. And as you guys know here, a while back, we talked about looking at the cost of buying radios for our entire first responders, fire, EMS, roads, sheriffs, so that everybody has the same radios. Because right now, everybody's got different radios, Motorola's, you name it. And, and they don't last very long. Radios only last about four or five years and then they're, they gotta send them in. And so we're trying to figure out a way we could do it all together in one and we can put these radios on a big rotation countywide and try and save a little bit of money there. That's still in process. There's some studies going on as far as if we need any more mountaintop repeaters. But the good news there is I think we're down to one or two more and then we are totally caught up on our mountaintop repeater replacement program. And there's, as you guys know, I think there's 13 of those. And we've got those all up to date, almost all up to date. We're almost there. And that's a really good feeling because that was a big problem I had 10 years ago was that we didn't have some that worked, period, at that time. But that's going really well. As you guys know, we've, we've kind of handled the EMS situation for a while. I'm looking forward to getting back together with the chiefs here in a month or so and their attorney and see if we can't figure out some more long-term funding for them. This next week, I'm down in Boise Wednesday, Thursday for the Idaho Resource Coordinating Council, which is a group of folks that basically tell the State Department of Land how to manage their timber and pasture land and kind of give them some ideas on how to improve efficiencies. And it's been pretty interesting boards, some interesting people. And then on Friday, I have the Health District. And the Health Districts right now are, they're coming up. We've come up with a budget and they're gonna be coming up to us probably next month. and they're going to be coming up to us probably next month. And, and like us, you know, they need more funds for salary increases. Um, they've had quite a bit of staff turnover, and we're trying to get ahead of that, get the salaries back up. And, um, I think they were asking for a 3% increase in the budget from last year. But Russell will be here one of these days to explain all that to us. And then, uh, trying to think what else I got.
Roadless Commission?
Huh?
Roadless.
Roadless Commission, we're a meeting in June in Moscow, the same week we have IAC. And then that, that's Monday, and then IAC's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And then Thursday and Friday that week, I'm in Courtland Lane for the annual Health District Conference, kind of a year, annual meeting. And there's a lot of concern coming from North Idaho that they want to do away with the Health District. They don't want to have it in their counties. And it's going to be an interesting discussion because I don't know how they're going to handle a lot of the programs that the Health Districts do now. But the rest of the counties, the rest of the districts are all very supportive and want to keep moving forward with it, with vaccinations and, and STDs and HIV treatments and.
Got to have environmentals just to do a septic permit.
Yeah, I don't know how, who, the county, their counties would have to take that function over. I don't think they realize the amount of, yeah, of infrastructure they'd have to have to put that back together, but.
You got Valley County soil and water.
And I went to the Soil and Water Conservation District last week and in a very nice, calm way, basically told them that we appreciate all their input on the stormwater and, and drainage and soil issues. But that, that, that's all we expect from them. And please stay in their lane and not comment about density or safety or overall growth patterns that we have planted and zoning for that function. And I think they took it pretty well. Nobody threw me out of the office, so we, um, there was a big discussion about, um, they, they're concerned about losing their office. And so I said, will you guys put together kind of a budget of what you would lose as in-kind match from the county, if you have to move out of that facility, to tell them us how much that, that would cost? Um, I offered the lower room downstairs to them for an office, and they weren't interested in any of that. So they're putting together some points, counterpoints, so to speak. Um, it's a really important part of Valley County. That's our touch point for all of our farmers and ranchers and big landowners to come in and do timber, grazing, water, you name it. They, they can do a lot of things through the Soil Conservation District. And so we'll see what they come up with. And when we have that discussion of whether or not we want to convert that into a rental or not, we'll just have to see. But, um, it may not be worth that conversion because they do bring a lot of money up to Valley County. If they do close, um, all the landowners, the folks up here, they have to go to AMIT to sign up. So the program would basically kind of fade away for Valley County. And so it's kind of an important discussion that's coming, just so you guys are aware. But I did tell them to please stay in your lane and just comment on soil and water and not to get involved in all the other stuff that they're trying to get involved with. So it went pretty well. And that's it. I'm sure there's more, but I can't remember the rest of them. Are we good? Everybody good there?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So then we're going to move on down our agenda. First, we got to find it. Okay, our next agenda is an action item. This is the Continued Public Care for Variants 2201. Brian, welcome. And is there, are we still proceeding, or what's the plan?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Hasbrook. Uh, been meeting with, uh, Brian Oki on this. There are some questions on some of the conditions of approval. Uh, we want to get those clarified and good, good, solid answers to you guys uh, prior to making a decision on it. So I'm requesting that we continue this to next week's meeting or the week after.
Hey Doug, what's your nearest time for next week?
Did you let them know?
I talked to Brian, then I got in the truck, drove it out here, so I didn't quite have a.
We want to make sure that we make good decisions.
Chairman, we would have a 1 o'clock for April 17th, if that works for everyone.
That work for you? April 17th at 1 o'clock, and let's do it in half an hour, Doug. And then when you guys get it all worked out together, let us know.
I.
Sorry, you, you folks should have been notified. You didn't have to come all the way down. But it's a beautiful day to get outside.
Huh? It's the first I've heard of it.
Well, I think there's some issues with the pathway, but I'm not sure of the details, and I'm sure Brian will clue you in, and we can go from there.
Okay. We did find some information from our previous, um, approval. And I can read you what it says in there. That makes.
Sure, if you don't mind coming to the mic, though, so we can get it on tape.
Um, Wes Roberts, McCall. And so in October 6th of 2020, we got approval. And, um, you know, in, in talking to Brian, we had a meeting with him, wife and I, and, um, actually Meredith was there as well on Tuesday, I think it was, last Tuesday, somewhere around there. But, um, in the process of that, I asked him what had changed with the, um, local housing portion of it when we were approved private, previously, and indicated that nothing had changed. And in our approval, um, that was not, um, part of the approval, was not a requirement of the approval.
Um, what, I'm sorry, Mr., was that where the, it was a deed restriction on your property?
Correct.
Okay, can I ask you, what about the, uh, um, pathways? What am I looking for here? Not the easement, the?
No, that's what it was, an easement. So on, um, oh, page, page six of the, of the finding of facts and, and that, um, it, number 16, sidewalks and back bike paths. Crown Lane is designated for a separated paved pathway in the pathways master plan. However, street front improvements are not required for single-family projects. So that's why in our requirements, um, first go around, pathways was not a requirement. Uh, that's, that's my take on it.
And it sounds like the housing deal was also.
Right, correct. The housing deal was not a requirement. Um, in talking to Oregon Bissau, um, who was the previous city planner, um, she indicated to me that that was an optional thing. If we wanted to do it, we could. And that if we opted to do that, there was a, uh, kickback to us, in monetary kickback to us. Um, but it was optional. So that's what we've, and I can make this previous approval available to you. You can email it to Doug or whatever, and, um, so that you would have that to look at. But anyway.
Well, I, I'm, from what I'm hearing, it sounds to me like we're not quite done with this application or this variance. It sounds like you had some concerns, and I know our prosecutor has some concerns on that.
Who does?
Our prosecutor on the, on the requirement for the pathway. So I would really like to send it back, and you and Brian can work with those details if you don't feel like you have to do things. And we got to make sure that's all upfront and on paper before we're going to approve a variance because that immediately puts the county in a libelous position. We approved that, it's something that maybe you didn't agree to. So we want to make sure all that homework is done before it comes back to us. And I hate to delay, I know it. It's not fun to delay people because you want to get started, but I think it's a prudent thing to do.
So we mentioned Brian talking about.
No, McCall's Brian.
And you talked to Brian? Is that what you were thinking?
He talked to our Brian.
We got two Bryans talking, yeah.
I didn't know who he was referring to.
We got two Bryans in the room.
Nagel, right?
No, this is Oki, Brian Oki. He's our civil attorney for the county. He's our civil.
All right.
Okay.
All right. Barry, did you have anything?
It's, no. April what, 17th?
April 17th at 1 o'clock.
Before you close, can I?
Sure, yeah, come on up here.
So while, while the Robertses are here, maybe we could, uh, have them kind of explain what their ult, ultimate goal or outcome is that they'd like to see, uh, accomplished here. As I think you just heard, they said in the original application or the original building permit approval, there was no requirement or condition placed upon the property for the dedication of a, of an easement. However, I, I also hear some frustration in further delays. And so if, if the goal is to move this forward quicker and, and that the dedicated easement is not a, a, a huge issue or problem for them, they'd be willing to, uh, they'd be willing to voluntarily provide that. And that's, that's the case. We can, we can certainly speed this, speed that process up. We just want to make sure that we've got their, their commitment, that they're willing to do it without any additional compensation and that, uh, uh, they're doing it voluntarily. So we can document that in the, the variance, variance itself. So, um, I, I mean, that's, that's really the, the question that, that remains between us and the, and the city. McCall's original recommendation for us to get flushed out. And so rather than waste a day or waste a trip down here, uh, if they'd be willing to kind of explain to the board for the record, I, I would still recommend that we at least, uh, uh, not make a decision today. Listen to, listen to what their goals are and what they would be satisfied with as a, as a good outcome. Then that'll help with our analysis. But just so you know, uh, it's, the, the Attorney General's Office has developed a, a takings analysis process for these very kinds of, of applications. And I think completing that analysis would be beneficial both for, uh, the county and the applicants in this process. So that, that documentation is also in the file, uh, that would support the decision. So with that, I'm, sit down and, and let, uh, the Robertses, uh.
Can I, can I ask, on the takings analysis, is it just the pathway or is it the deed restriction also that you're?
Well, uh, I, I mean, I think the, the, really just the pathway.
Okay.
You understand, Mr. and Mrs. Roberts, kind of what's going on here? And I'll try to be brief about it, but in the impact area, McCall does most of the permits. They, they design the conditions of approval, all that stuff. And they bring it to us, and we, we say yea or nay on that. And in this instance, what we're worried about is that part that they're requiring you to provide a pathway through, whether it's an easement or deed to lend or however that works. And then your earlier statement about, uh, in our original application, there was no deed restrictions for housing. And I want you guys to understand that we're not comfortable moving forward until you're comfortable with the requirements that McCall has placed on this. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Could I just ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
Do I need to come over?
Yeah, so that we can get along, uh, otherwise it's kind of mumbly.
Well, here's just a couple of our concerns. As far as the easement for a pathway, I mean, if you would look at the property, there's a row of trees that goes down there. So you can't, I don't think anybody would want to knock the trees out. So then if we jump to the other side, the way that they had that, I don't know, the grading soil, whatever, that's all done. My understanding is if we have to try to move the house, we'd have to either downsize the house, and then we'd have to have that whole thing. That costs tens of thousands of dollars, all that. So we'd have to redo all that. So we don't understand, Brian made the comment to us, oh, you could just stick the path up. It's not easy, the way the house is, because we went on their private approval, yes, you can do this. Then our architect did all of that. We, it's not a simple, okay, we'll just stick a path here. We have major stuff to redo, which would not only cost more money, but it would cost time. The other thing was, we wanted to use that apartment for rental. That was just, we thought, oh, that would be a great thing to do. And so, again.
Short-term rental or long-term?
No, no, long-term. No, we don't, we didn't, we, you know, of course, we had thrown that around before, but I think the long-term is so much better and for the needs of, that was before anything was said. Like he said, he was specifically told, no, that is not a requirement. So we've just heard so many different things. I guess that has produced the frustration because it's never been about for us, please give us special privileges. It's just, we were told we could do this, we moved forward doing that. And now it's like we can't seem to get, we're high-centered and we can't move on. And I just, it's just not getting concrete, like, okay, this was the code, this is what was required, when we actually have proof that it wasn't. And I guess that's the frustration. And I don't know how to move forward because I feel like the city wants what they want. How, how do you get? Because we don't know how to get an easement. We're at the place now, honest, that it's like, okay, if we have to do this, we're going to have to just forget the whole project and, and sell that piece of property and do something else because we are so frustrated with fighting with it. And it's like, it's like I said, our parents live with us. And it's like, it's already been so difficult that I don't know how to go from here. So it's not, not wanting to be cooperative. We don't know how to be cooperative anymore because of the money and everything. We just don't.
Well, and I appreciate your honesty. And I think that, you know, before we come up here and can, and approve what, what McCall is asking you guys to do, I want to make sure you guys are good with it, and it sounds like you're not, whether it's the housing requirement or it's the easement for the path. So my feeling is you guys need to go back with, and work with Brian and start over. And let's look at this, do we really have to do this to get this variance? Or is this just something that McCall wants? And we would all like to see a pathway. I mean, it helps the community, helps everybody, but if it's going to be in your front door, well, it's not going to work. You know, so those are the things you guys need to work out.
Like, I think at this point, it's kind of, it's a legal issue. And so, you know, cities can require things, counties can require things, and you, you understand that. We want to make sure that it's legally correct before we move forward. We don't want to approve something or disapprove something, that there's a question of legality. And so I think that that's why this extra week will be helpful, just to allow the legal teams.
Be in. Over.
What?
Well, that's what a takings analysis is for, is, I don't know.
You get two lawyers in a room and they'll disagree with each other. So this is what we're asking them to do.
If they're asking you to, to give an easement for a pathway, in order to get your variance, that's a takings, unless they compensate you for it. That's a value there, and that's what a takings analysis does. Same thing with the restriction on your deed, that it can only be this and that and that. Well, that's, uh, a takings, and that should be analyzed to see if you're good with that.
So why on the first one, though? Why did they pass it? If that's not changed and it's been the same, why was it okay for the first one? But now it's like, it's not acceptable.
You're going to have to ask them that. I don't, I can't answer that.
I believe that code has changed.
I know that has, but. So I am coming into this fairly late, but looking back to the previous, the previous meeting that we had, there was an explanation from the city of McCall that the original ordinance that you had applied for, uh, the building permit under did not require either the dedication of the easement for the walking path or the deed restriction related to the ADU. Since your building permit expired and then you had to reapply, that was what put you into this different, different legal, these different legal requirements. If you would have constructed the property, your, your home, when you originally received the building permit, you would have had the opportunity to, uh, to go forward with those permissions. But because that expired, you had to reapply. And, and what you were reapplying for was a building permit under a new ordinance. The issue that we have here is I've heard in not only this hearing, but the previous one, that you have concerns. You have concerns about the requirement of an easement and, and I guess also the accessory dwelling unit restrictions that, that are imposed on those. In some situations, and, and this is, and I need to be very clear, my legal advice and counsel is for the board. You, if you have legal questions, you need to get your own legal advice and, and counsel. And the city of McCall has their own attorneys as well. So I am going to advise and recommend what's in the best interest of Valley County. It may not be in your best interest. But, uh, the reason that I'm standing here is because I want to ensure that the county protects its interests in these approvals. Uh, because this, because your property, uh, is located in the area of impact, the county has jurisdiction over. the county has jurisdiction over this. We have an agreement with the City of McCall that the ordinances that apply in the area of impact will be the city's code. So that's why Brian Parker is sitting behind me. And it's really confusing and I understand that. But we are trying to apply the city code in the area of impact and it applies to your property. But what we can't, what we can't do is take on the risk that because you were agreeable to this easement requirement in order for you to move forward to get your house built, that you come back later and say, well, we really didn't agree. We were forced to do it. Or we felt like we had to agree to this in order to get a building permit and then come back against the county and say, we were due some compensation. So that's the analysis that I suggested to the board that we do. And as I mentioned before, the Attorney General's Office has a checklist process. It's a good takings analysis. And even though you haven't formally asked for it, I'd recommend it to the board that that would be a good analysis to have in our file. Once that is completed, we can make a better and more informed decision. But if, and that's why I got up and said, if it's not that important to you, the value of the easement isn't as important to you as being able to build your home and you're willing to donate that portion of your building lot for the benefit of the public to have a walking path through that area and you'd like to get going on the building of your property, that is certainly okay. But we want to make sure that we document that that's done voluntarily, that there won't be any recourse later that you come back on the county and say, we were due a payment. Was never, we never received it. So that's the issue in a nutshell. And that's the analysis, I think, that we need to get done.
Brian, can the county formally request a takings analysis?
Sure. Well, right. And that would be something that we would do. But I'd also like to work closely with the City of McCall. This is, like I said, this is the City of McCall's policy that is adopted within their city code to have this travel plan that includes walking paths and sidewalks through neighborhoods like this. And so they're obviously have a stake in it as well. So I would expect that I would work with their city attorney to complete that process.
You guys understand? I want to make sure you understand all this. Yep, come on up. Do you have anything to add?
I think we understand it. Speaking to the local housing portion of it, this past week, when we met with Brian in his office, I specifically asked him, what has changed since we were approved previously? He said, nothing. So my understanding from that, and I guess I could be wrong, is that if we weren't required to have the deed restricted portion, then we would not be required to have it now. As it pertains to the pathway, if that's going to be a requirement, we don't have room for it without tens of thousands of dollars. We're not interested in going that way. That's basically the summary.
Thank you. I appreciate your honesty. And I think Brian's heard all this. When you guys go back and give this another shot, see what kind of deal you can make with him on some of these requirements. And then we come back next week and we'll proceed with the variance if you're still interested.
Who's doing a takings analysis? Is McCall doing a takings analysis also? Okay, so that is what will be resolved before next week? I just want to make sure they understand the path forward and that I understand the path forward.
What is a taking analysis? I'm sorry, I don't know what that is.
I can.
Yes, a takings analysis is a, again, Attorney General's Office has provided a template for this. It's a determination of whether the condition of approval or government action is unduefully taking property or property rights from. I was planning on working with our city attorney's office to prepare the takings analysis, have it sent over to Brian Yelkey for review.
Okay. So the, one question real quick. When we're talking about the bike path or walking path, whatever, is this something that the city puts in and pays for? Or is this supposed to be incurred onto the homeowner?
The condition of approval is to provide an easement. The actual pathway would come subject to funding and construction plan at a later date.
But they wouldn't come out of their pocket?
No, it would just be the dedication of the easement.
Just a decade in the easement. Well, and there's a fine line between conditions of approval and a takings. If someone, if any government agency says, hey, we'll let you do this and this and this and this, but you got to do this and this and this for us, that's normal. That's okay. But if part of it is, hey, you got to give up a 20-foot strip of ground on your front lawn for a path someday, then that's a little different. To me, that is, there's a value to that. And you want to make sure you're compensated for that value or you get something else comparable from the city for that trade. And some people are fine. If you come up here today and said, hey, we're good with the housing deal. We're good with the trail. We want to move forward. We probably could have solved this today.
We just didn't know how to do it with the way it's laid out. We don't know how to put that path.
Well, and you certainly want to have some kind of input on where that path goes. You don't want them to chop down all the trees in your front yard to build a path someday. You know, those are the things that you need to work out. Okay, so we're good?
So we will table this till next week then?
And I need a motion to table it.
I move that we table.
Twenty-two oh-one.
Variance twenty-two dash oh-one at three hundred Cron Lane. Date certain of April seventeenth.
At one o'clock.
At one o'clock.
Second, a good second. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Don't give up. Guys can work it out. I know Brian's a reasonable guy. You can do it. Okay, Mackenzie, come on up. You're the next action item. This is Valley County Public Relations Presentation. Welcome, good to see you again.
Nice to see you guys. It's been a while since I've made an appearance in person. Awesome. Today I had one specific thing that was the reason I got on the agenda. But I thought it'd also be a good opportunity to talk about moving forward. If you guys would like a monthly report. I feel like I don't come all that often and I send little updates here and there. But if you want something more regular, we can chat about that too. So you guys know what's going on if that's good. So I'll start first with the reason I got on the agenda in the first place, which was an idea we had about combating misinformation in the community. It's tricky. You know, there's, social media in particular is just hard. Like, we're never going to respond to everybody. If you engage with certain individuals, it's always going to go down a rabbit hole and we're never going to make progress. So you know, we've been chatting a little bit about what to do there because it's frustrating when you see, I mean, chatter is fine. People are welcome to their opinions. But if there's a misinformation piece, we want to have a place to be able to at least address it in some aspect. So Sherry and I were kind of chatting and I floated the idea of what I would call like a fact-check site. You know, like how you can always like type in different things, you know, to fact-check big websites. We could do something similar with Valley County. It does not have to be a direct response to a specific, you know, letter to the editor or a specific post on Facebook. It doesn't have to be that. It just, if we see something, we can add this to our own website, sort of like the news feed. It would be like a page where the news feed would go on. So it's kind of a running archive. We can add categories so they're searchable if you want to look, you know, something specific to the treasurer's office or something specific to like P and Z or something like that. And it just becomes this place where we can put the factual information out. And then from there, we can share it on our own, you know, social pages. We could share it around, add some bits in the monthly newsletter, things like that. But it becomes a way to present correct information without having to directly engage with often unproductive conversations in, you know, a social platform specifically. So I thought it was a big enough issue that it would be worth an approval from all the commissioners, that system, to see if that worked. And so I guess I'm open to your guys' questions, discussion, thoughts on how that works. Or any other ideas. It's just hard to, we're never going to be able to respond to every single thing. But it would be nice to have a place where we could, you know, directly cite code or ordinance or, you know, a direct program and say, here's the information about this program. Read for yourself, sort of a thing. That would be the idea is, it wouldn't be a subjective response. It would be pointing directly to code, to, you know, a state program, to a county program, to a city program, depending on, you know, what the question was. So that would be the idea behind it.
This week, I saw on Facebook about our roads. Well, all my property taxes that I pay can't fix the roads. There would be a great response in that your property taxes don't fix roads. This is where your road funding comes from. This is what we do.
And I think it's a really cool thing that we haven't had to tax people yet for roads.
Right, we've done it once.
Been able to do it with gas tax and grants and, you know, all that kind of stuff and kept it together.
Well, then the idea would be then, if someone saw something like that, you know, someone give me a heads up, let's craft the response, let's add it to the website. Then it also gives a very objective place to say, oh, hey, have you checked out this link? This will give you all the information you're looking for. And that's all you have to say. You know, it doesn't, you don't have to engage on that level. And it takes up a lot of your time. It takes up their time. It's, and often, we're not going to win that argument. We just want to have a place where we can show people.
You know, communication like that, because like what you just said, Al, I can't tell you how many people say, well, my property taxes are supposed to be going to pave all these roads and fix all these potholes. I hear that a lot. Oh, yeah.
And have taxed them once.
Yeah.
People are foregone.
The interesting thing that I've noticed over the years is that I know people know that we don't use property tax revenue for roads. But it's just a general category for them.
Yeah, it's easy. Well, it's easy to.
I'm tired of my taxes not fixing the road, you know?
Exactly.
I mean, my thought would be is that something like this, if this information exists, like it does exist on our website, it's just sometimes hard to find. And a lot of times, people aren't going to go looking for that. So it's a way for us to serve it up and call attention to it. And then in timely instances, such as now, when there are a lot of potholes because it's, you know, it's the season, we can start promoting that and pointing people back directly to that. So even if we're not responding to direct claims, we are also being able to communicate the correct facts. And hopefully, people will start to refer back to that then as a source of like, well, I'm going to just double check. Let me just double check. So it could be a page, you know, if it got robust enough, we could also, the way the website is set up is that, you know, news feeds or news categories can be categorized to each department. So each department, we select that this is like a fact-check thing and also the roads. And then if we wanted to in the future, those items could also show up as like news items on the road and bridge page. So if someone was specifically there, you could see, you know, anything that pertains to that. We do that on a couple of pages, not every page. But we could structure it such that it would be easy to find, not just on the news page, but if you happen to bounce on, you know, the recycling page or the road and bridge page or you're going to pay your property taxes and you're looking up, you know, something that there's a feed there that you can see that. So it's easy to find, easy to get your correct information.
Well, and then the other thing too, that I think needs to be part of this is that this is what we did last year. We paved all these roads here. We did this, we replaced. And these are the roads we're going to do this year.
Yep.
And it's coming, so to speak. Not only you're wrong on the tax part, but we do have plans and here's what you're going to see this summer.
Here's the upcoming plan.
I don't know. Just, I'm not a marketing guy. I'm not a web guy. So.
I think the more, the more correct information we can put out there in a, you know, non-confrontational way, I think the better. We've talked a lot about, there are so many programs in this county that people don't know about. There's a couple that people love to talk about. They get a lot of publicity and not necessarily in a good way. But they're missing like the rest of the iceberg underneath. There's like all these great programs and we don't talk about that because we, our communication tends to be a little more reactive. This would give us a chance to be a little more proactive and put, you know, some positive communication out there in a structured way that people could search and find and reference even a year later if they wanted to. So.
And the reason that we hired Mackenzie, some background, is after the road leveling, we realized people really didn't know what the county was doing, what positive things the county does every day. And so, you know, we decided to hire somebody to help us with some publicity, to put it out there. And I think it's been effective. I just think we need to go a little bit more. And so responding to misinformation, I think, is one way that we can do that, just helping people find what's true, what's not true, you know, give some correct information. I'm going to talk to Mackenzie and bring back to you guys a full educational component also. You know, what is true in Lupala? What is Lupala? You know, how can we do this together as a community? I'm really trying to figure out how we communicate more effectively in Valley County together. Instead of everybody getting into a meeting and screaming at each other about what's true and what's not true, how can we help facilitate a conversation upfront about what is legal, what's not legal, you know, what can we do? What can't we do? Best practices, those types of things. Just get more information out.
Things are good? You don't hear from people.
We hear from everybody right now. So we got to find a way to.
Communication is everything.
I think it's good to identify those themes too. And those themes are kind of seasonal and, you know, they kind of ebb and flow. But then if we start tracking that and we know that, you know, March every year, March is a good time to start putting out some information about roads ahead of like, you know, the big melt. I think that it would be nice to not, again, to going back to being way more proactive instead of reactive. It's just going to take a little bit of time to set that program up. But once we have that, I think it'd be a great reference and something we could build on.
No mobile grooming program. You know, a lot of misinformation on the fact that, well, you haven't groomed in two weeks. Well, yes, we have. We've been putting out, you know, check sheets on exactly where we're grooming every day. And so I can think of that. I can think of, you know, how we pay for backcountry road maintenance. I mean, there's just a lot of information that we can.
Well, you know, it's a hard question to ask, Mackenzie. But here, a week or so ago, you sent us out all the number of folks that are hitting on the website and responses and stuff.
Yep.
And I don't know if that's a lot or if it's just maybe 10% of the population. Are we, do we need some other venue? I guess one of them, besides the website.
It's tricky. So with the website and we really have, we have the website, I would say, social media in the form of a Facebook page. That's what the county has. And then we have, I think, what I would say, local media. So Star News is really kind of, those three vehicles are how we get information out to people. We have started to add in the monthly commissioner newsletter. That list has not grown hugely. There's probably 300 people on that list. Like, that could grow. It's kind of a direct communication. We do it monthly, but it could also, if there was issues that came up or clarifications or like these fact-check, you know, topics, that could go out a little bit more frequently. The website is a really good vehicle paired with other stuff. Like, I think that's the one thing is, any of these tactics don't work independently of each other. They've got to work together. So we just have to reinforce the message. And I've lived in Valley County for almost 20 years now and been doing marketing. And I, they always say like the rule of thumb is like, you've got to hit people with the same message like 10 times before they really get it. And here, it's like 25. I don't know why. People don't pay attention. They'll read the newspaper and just like skip over everything. So it's so hard, whether you're promoting an amazing nonprofit event that's raising money for great stuff or something like taxes. Like, no one pays attention. I don't know why. So it is a combination. And I don't, I don't know anyone that has found the secret sauce. I think you just have to be consistent so that people, when they decide that they want to ask a question, they know where to go and it's there for them. Even if they didn't see it the first time we posted it, they can come in and find it. Even if they didn't see it the first time we posted it, they can come in and find it, so.
I think the website is our landing page. Everything we do, we should be driving people to our landing page. So when you guys get questions, go, go, go look on the website. You know, if we constantly say, go to the website.
Yep.
It drives people to information.
Yep.
And then when they get there, we have to make it easy to find.
Yep.
I think sometimes ours is and sometimes it's not.
It'll be user-friendly.
It's hard with, like, something like a county that has so many departments and so many different programs and so many people. And like, i- in general, it's hard to just organize that sheer amount of information. So search functions, you know, pages that break out, frequently asked questions, most departments have those. I think those are hit pretty fre- pretty frequently, um, because, you know, that's where people like to go. Any place that people can get quick snippets of information, no one likes to read for an hour. If you can have a little blip, if you can search titles, I think that is, that is the most effective way to get people some information. It's gonna take time and it's not perfect, but I, I do think it'd be one extra aspect that would help us in just our communication mix, so. Um, it'd be a thought, if everyone's open to it.
Well, and seeing I'm looking at it right now, if you go to the road department on the current dashboard, it says, it shows everything we did last year. You know, and, and I'm thinking, well, this is great.
People don't know about it. And that's why it's like, promoted it, we've done our thing. But it's like, again, that message has to keep being repeated over and over again. Um, but it's also timely, you know, it's like, if you talk about a road dashboard, I don't know, in November, if we forgot, you know? And like, well, road construction season's over and it's done. And so we need to talk about it leading up to it, um, and that's something that I need to really sit down and look at is like, what are the hot topics in each month so that we can address those in a timely fashion when people's brains are actually thinking about those topics? And I think we'll be more effective communicating in that way.
Well, and things that we require, Mackenzie, and that's where you're gonna have to spend some time with maybe the directors, but, you know, Jeff needs to make sure and get out the word, you need an approach permit when you are touching, you know, a county road. A lot of people don't know that, so they go and do things that they're not supposed to be doing.
Yep.
Those are the kind of things that we need to put out there and, you know, really easy to find. These are the requirements.
Mm-hmm.
Um, before you snowplow in a county right away. You gotta have a snow per, you know, a permit to be able to do that.
Yep. I have started sending, it's usually every other month, so I have, people have not responded robustly, I shall say. Um, but sending out, uh, an email every couple of months, it's just, what's going on in your department? What's happening? What can I help you with? Like, um, and I get, I get some departments that usually send me stuff all the time, every week. I get some that send me stuff once a month and there's several departments that I never hear from ever. So I'm not really sure what the best approach is. And if it's, um, you know, making the rounds, sitting down with every department for an hour and just saying, let's chat about it, what season, like, what month should we be doing this and that? And let's like, let's brainstorm and helping us get, um, a, a, a better handle on the messaging for the year. Um, I'd be really open to that.
I think that might be a really good idea for some departments. I think there's some departments that, you know, it's not important to people how many building permits we have.
That's true.
You know, but the road department is going to start something next month and this is the, what they're gonna do, those kind of things. We have the same issue in the road advisory committee, it's a lack of communication from the road department saying, here's what we've been doing.
Right.
They have no idea that, you know, they've replaced 30-some culverts in the last two weeks and nobody even knows about that. Things like that.
Yep. Yeah.
With the building department though, it will be important this year because we are gonna transition a new software. So the way you do things is gonna be totally different. IT, we don't want anybody to know what we do with IT, but, um, just some of the software programs that, you know, the changes we're gonna have, we have a huge change right now with going to techno- or Tyler Technology. How's that gonna impact the, the community? You know, what will they see from that? That's a big change.
Even so, like, even if there wasn't a big, a big software change from the building department, just knowing that maybe twice a year, we do a roundup of, like, what are the numbers? Like, what did we just do this last six months? And then what did we do at the end of the year and how did that compare to last year? Here is some people. But like, that little report, it helps put things into perspective. Cause when people say, oh, building's out of control, you're like, well, is it? Or is it an exponential growth? No, but at least we have numbers, right? So we then, we can refer people to those kind of numbers. So I think we just, I, I need to get a better handle on that and I, I've been, I've been a little unsure of the best way to do that. So maybe I'll just start going door to door.
I think it's probably a great idea, honestly. Yeah, I think just spending some time.
They can't say no if I'm in their face, right?
Set an appointment and just, you know, notify us that.
One of the things that I get a lot of comments from from people is the fact that I read in the paper. And I'm not just saying it should be paper, but we get the whole gist of what planning and zoning is doing next week, all their applications, subdivisions, and that's, people see that and they go, oh my gosh. The coal and the 358 knew that was, that hit big, you know? And people wanna know what's going on, so they're reading it, or seeing it some places.
They see it on social media to a very.
Which is not correct.
Yeah, and it's to a, you know.
I would be curious, I know you guys get a lot of communications.
Um. Oh my gosh.
You know, if it was even once a week or once every couple of weeks, like, you know, a three-part bullet list, what are the three topics that you heard most about this week? Yeah, that kind of stuff is really important information for me. Cause then we can start putting out the correct information. If there are topics that people are really, you know, amped about, let's address them. Instead of, I think if we, if there's a lack of communication or silence sometimes, that's like scary for people. So we wanna be able to put it out there and, uh, you know, and just, and help, help put the right information out in the right, you know.
That's the best way to quench a fire.
Yep, yep. Um, so maybe I'll just.
So do you feel like you have the time in your day to come down and walk through here and talk to different departments and?
Yeah, I mean, I'll have to schedule, I'll schedule it out. What I'll probably do is look at, you know, one or two days and just try to set an hour with each department. Um, whether we think that they're gonna be, you know, robust information pushers or not, I think it's important to just understand the programs, what kind of communication they want. But then internally as well, I mean, you know, if it's, if it's something down the line that we wanna develop, like the, uh, Johanna and I developed this property tax flyer that went out in, in all the bills this year and it explains your property taxes and that kind of simple stuff.
That was awesome.
Which is great, it just, it takes a while to develop, you know? It's like, she puts all the content together and then I design it and we go back and forth on what she thinks is gonna like, look the best and be the most digestible for people and, and it works out great. So if there's something like that, um, you know, that, that might not be happening for six months, let's at least get it on the calendar so we know it's coming down the, down the line and then work backwards so that we hit those targets. Um, so it doesn't have to just be press releases or social posts or, or anything like that. I mean, it could be, it could be anything, it could be collateral, it could be, uh, you know, press, like, literally anything, but whatever people need.
So who does the Valley County Facebook page? Who watches that?
Uh, Mackenzie posts on it, posts on it. I reshare all of our jobs that we have put, we post every job on it. The sheriff's department has their own and Kelly does that. I try and reshare those, um, you know, we kind of watch what's going on there too.
Well, you know, just for an example, today, we applied for a grant to buy an armored vehicle for the sheriff's department. And I know there's people gonna be against that. They feel like, oh man, you're getting, why does Valley County need this? But because Kevin Stabba explained to us that they've requested it from other agencies and they're just not available. So we need to have our own, those are the kind of things that I think would help us sell that to the public.
Well, and it's a hundred percent grant.
Hundred percent grant.
No Valley County funds out of it, it is, you know, it's being provided by Homeland Security, so.
I would, I, the one, uh, the one meeting I think would be really important to have is between commissioners and sheriff's department. Because I am hired by you guys and the sheriff's department operates in a little bit of a separate PR capacity. Like, I don't really step into the sheriff world. They post, Kelly sends me information, I do that, and we kind of go back and forth. But there's, there's kind of a separation, cause their communication is a lot different than, than what, you know, than what we are doing here. So I don't wanna step on toes, I wanna, but it might be nice to understand how that meshes and how we can support each other back and forth that way. Cause for a story like this, it impacts both. But I, like, I don't wanna, I don't wanna step on toes and like, run with it. But then, you know, they would like to put some information out or have some additional things to add or something like that, so.
Well, unlike this armored vehicle, he would be the guy you wanna talk to, but for me, that maybe should come from us. We're really proud of the fact that we're looking forward in the future, we've applied for this grant. Hopefully this will be something that we'll have.
Sounds great.
Yeah, you, you're absolutely right, is, there's a lot of fiftums in here and you kind of have to know who to talk to to get to the right king.
You don't step in the wrong aisle.
No.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so I will set those meetings. Um, is it an action item to vote to do that fact check, what I would say, webpage and category system? We wanna vote on that or is that just to like?
Oh, it is an action.
Listed as an action.
No, this is an action, I think we should vote on, and then we'll see how it works.
Right.
You know, in a couple of months, three months, four, six months, come back and say, well, mm, yeah, it's working great.
Yeah.
And then we can kind of reaffirm and maybe throw more, more money at it.
That sounds good to me.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve Mackenzie Kramer to move forward and create a fact check page for our website and to incorporate a, uh, public relations program to identify actual facts.
I get.
Is that a second? Move to second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I motion carries. Good, thank you so much.
Yep, um, one final thing, and I can work with Doug on this as well. Uh, do you wanna, would you like an ongoing report, like a once a month sort of a thing? Uh, what do you guys need from me?
In quarterly? I don't know, what do you guys want?
Yeah, I think that'd be great. Well, and I think we did an annual plan last year, I think maybe we need to update our annual plan just so we kind of know where you're, what you're working on.
Circle.
And I really do, we're asking Mackenzie Castor to come with grants and what she's working on. Um, so I think it would be appropriate, our directors, which really, you're a director of our PR program, come every other week, so maybe once a month would be appropriate.
Okay. I'm happy to do whatever, you just let, let me know.
I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, just get on the agenda with Doug.
Perfect.
This month.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thanks a lot. We're gonna take five minutes and then we'll come back and move on to our next agenda. Can you get us, get us, please?
Yes. Just a second. I forgot how he has his setup. You're not muted yet.
Okay.
Okay, you should be good.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're at the 2:15 agenda item. This is not an action item, this is Valley Soil and Water Conservation District presentation of a five-year resource. I'm not sure who's leading the discussion, but I please ask you to come to the mic so that we can get it recorded. But you guys, you guys all wanna come up to the front? Sure, yeah, come up, that'd be great too, we can come down there if you want. Just tip the chair back, help yourself. We'll move down here, we're gonna have a little.
You have your five-year plan?
I don't mind at home. Sorry, I read this much of it.
Cause this was, this was in the red folder, right?
Are they on the table? What, are they on the table? Either, they're either on that side just one or in the wall. I think we all have ours.
The red folder.
I just need one more copy.
Did you have your red folder for last week?
Okay, so where we're gonna start this, we're gonna do a little roll call so she can get it for the record. So you wanna go first?
Sure.
Ready?
Yeah. I would grab a couple.
Okay, so I am Bill Leaf, one of the supervisors. Is that all you need or do you need my address?
Nope, don't need your address.
Darina Farm, district manager.
Art Trautner, chairman. All instructions.
Judy Anderson, supervisor.
Supervisor.
A lot of supervisors. We supervise soup.
Did I see Kaylee?
I run the meetings.
Did I see Kaylee?
Yes, she's gonna be here, she ran to grab some more copies of the five-year plan. And her title? Um, she is the, um, grant administrator. Admin assistant. Thank you.
Admin assistant.
Are we allowed to say it?
Are you guys here for the soil and water presentation? Okay.
You need to sleep.
No, 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 no.
No, I just wanted to come down and meet everybody and, uh, I've missed it, I just flew back from Honduras and I would've had it on agenda. And I'm getting ready to start a nonprofit and I wanna do it all with God, do it the correct way. But I'm, are you Mr. Moplin? Okay, great, I've been wanting to meet you, you're hungry and you just see what's going on over there. I've been, uh, trying to meet the sheriff right now, whoever the lady is, but going through, I don't know a lot about politics. I don't know a lot about business, I just got an accountant, I got $10,000 put away aside for me and her and this is what God wants us to do. So I wanna recover your house here in the valley. I wanna, you know, and it can be.
Let me stop you, I'm not trying to.
Yes, sir.
I think what you're saying is more than I like it, but can we wait till we're done here and then we'll, after this, we'll bring it up?
Yeah, just, I just wanted to introduce you.
Does that work?
What I'd recommend also though is we don't have public, uh, information on the agenda today. So for you to be able to present, you just need to reach out to our clerk's office, get it on our agenda and then we can have a full conversation.
That'll be next month.
Next week?
Next.
You have it next week?
We have a meeting every Monday, at the end of the day, we do public input.
Great, well then I just thank you guys for having us here and God bless everyone.
You bet.
I don't wanna make you wait for too long.
I thought I learned how to start from quick. I'd have to speak in front of y'all too and learn how to do this correctly, so thank you.
That's okay, we just fine you, it's big money, $10,000 bucks if you interrupt.
Broke. Yeah, thank you, folks, anything you can do, prayers.
Okay.
Okay.
We're ready when you are. If you're not ready, that's okay.
Waiting for Darina. But, so, is, are there any, first off, are there any questions you guys might have about, you know, what our interaction with the, the commission should be? Any suggestions of what you guys want from us specifically? And, you know, our whole direction has been, since the early 90s, basically, is to try to help Cascade Reservoir primarily. And then we have, Von has done a lot of forestry stuff since he's been on the board. And then we have, Von has done a lot of forestry stuff since he's been on the board. But, uh, you know, water quality, water savings, riparian restoration, you know, trying to repair all the riverbanks and whatnot. And then trying to, uh, install more efficient irrigation systems on agricultural land. Uh, and then some of the offshoots or lesser things that just happen to come along with it are, uh, helping wildlife habitat, fish habitat, where it goes back to the road on West Mountain, all the culverts, the fish-friendly passage type culverts. And then just keeping the district financially on the, alive, which the last few years.
That question honestly, because, um, Darina and I had this conversation probably a year ago and I just have never understood your mission, you know? And so I've reached out to like at a state level, what do the soil, uh, conservation soil and water districts do? And the response that I've gotten at that level is you're really here for farmers and ranchers, helping them to make sure that we are utilizing water the most efficient manner that we can. Um, I think that some of the irrigation upgrades, the irrigation system management is, is what I was hearing anyway. Trying to help with water quality, best management practices when it comes to draining into any of our water bodies is important. So I'm looking for you guys for that information, BMP. The cloud seeding took me off guard.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, particularly with the way it was presented. I was unfortunately, I, I think that we didn't get started on the right conversation there. Cloud seeding could be something, you know, that would come from you guys. I think that's a boundary, if you will. Um, but I, I just have never really seen what your mission statement is for Valley County Soil and Water District.
Well, that, uh, like, I mean, like I said, primarily in our district, it's been water quality issues. And all of that was driven by the, the toxic outbreak back in the early nineties. And we put in a lot of, uh, BMPs all over the valley or in the cascade drainage, putting the drains into cascade. Including a lot of on-farm, uh, irrigation systems, uh, and which were partially funded through, uh, federal and state funds to get the McCall treated effluent out of the river, which was, the practice in those days was to treat the effluent and then put it back in the river. It was pretty high, it was the highest point source of phosphorus and contributed contributions to Cascade Reservoir. That and the fishing game hatchery, actually. I mean, you know, you have the fish farm, you're feeding fish and the nutrients go right down the river in a concentrated form.
Wish we would've gotten the South Lake Sewer and Water District from you guys too. I think we're still working on that together, right?
Right.
I think that will come up as part of the Quomp planning grant. I think that's a priority.
So the state agency that controls this.
Mm-hmm.
What is the state agency's task? Because all government agencies has a task.
Well, they, the Idaho, uh, Soil and Water Conservation Commission is, uh, they provide technical assistance for a lot of our projects, especially when the NRCS, National Resource Conservation Service, is not able to, either because of staffing demands, usually because of staffing demands, which has been the case for several years. They're starting to get more staff now and can help us. But in the past, they were our primary go-to, uh, outfit for engineering, technical, uh, advice and assistance.
And their financial assistance, our financial funding comes through the state, through the commission. So the commission distributes what they're allocated through the legislature to the individual districts.
There has to be some kind of information on what that allocation is paying for. I mean, we know, we know what each one of the state agencies' tasks are supposed to be and then those flow locally.
Right. We can get that for you. It's, it's quite a, I mean, there's like over, I think there's over fifty districts. And it, it breaks down what each district gets, but the funding for each district is, uh, in, uh, the commission, correct me as always. Um, we get a, everybody gets a base funding of a little over eight thousand dollars just to run the office through the, I mean, for us, a whole year, right? So a lot of districts, uh, that aren't very active, that's probably the most money they see all year. So they're, they have a very part-time secretary. And then, you know, five-member group of volunteers like we have here. So happens this district is very, very active and has been for a long time, so we have a bigger budget. And, uh, and what you guys give us each year is, uh, we get an equal amount from, I, from the commission. They match that, that contribution, whether it be in kind or cash. And any in, or any cash, like donations, the state will match. So our.
And I understand, I'm still not getting there. I'm still not getting it.
I think.
So what I, and, and it might be in here, cause I haven't had.
Look in page sixteen of the.
Because what I'm trying to get to is what, what are they paying for your services? Do you guys get to determine your, what this district does? I mean, do they give you parameters? I, that's what.
Well, everything we do is determined by the best management practices that each program or granting agency, you know, each agency has a set of grants, it seems like. You know, the BOR has a set of grants, the state has the equip and the feds have, um.
Federal is NRCS has equip.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry.
The mission has WAPPA.
Water quality.
And then districts all utilize the three nineteen grants through IDEQ.
So notice different agenda items for you guys versus Southwest Sewer and Water, or, uh, where they are, because.
Southwest, who?
Um, what is the other one that?
RC and D.
Yeah.
That's a completely different organization. That is not a conservation district. So the conservation districts are charged with, um, addressing all soil and water resource issues, established in nineteen fifty-seven.
Natural resources. Well, and I think a big part component up here is timber.
Correct.
Big component up here, but, uh, to me, um, honestly, I've been behind, I love what you guys do. I was on the board for years and years, but, uh, Soil and Water Conservation District, if you turn it around, it's a district that conserves soil and water. Basically what the issue is, make irrigation practices more efficient, try and save soil wherever possible. And, um, that to me is their main function. And over the years, we've asked them to comment on stormwater management plans and look at, because we didn't have that expertise. And that's the best thing that he was talking about is that as a, as a farmer that does irrigation practice, you get free engineering, basically from these guys. They designed the whole system or if it's a head gate, whatever it is, where before you, you, as a farmer, you had to pay for that. And it's a lot of money. And so that's when these things were started. When was it started? Sixty years ago?
Conservation districts in general evolved out of the despot.
Yeah.
Because of the loss of soil and how to deal with that. But we don't just deal with agriculture and, um, farming practices. So we, we are charged to help assist any landowner to deal with water and soil resource issues. So that allows us to deal with the city of Cascade with their stormwater plan. We've been able to contribute over fifty thousand dollars to their planning to improve that, their drainage into the North Fork Payet River.
Or even the boat ramp, the drainage off the boat ramp up by the golf course. Same deal, we spent money there, Donley Boat docks, we've done a lot of upgrading there, just all around the reservoir. And then roads also, West Valley Road, we grant money to fix drainage issues over there, fish passage. Last big thing down over there was try to fence the reservoir off on the west side.
Did email a list of projects to you and I wasn't able to print it. I don't know if you were able to print it? Yes. Okay, thank you. You have a.
I think like I said, I think that page sixteen kinda gives a, a general idea of what our.
Can I go make copies of that?
Absolutely. This is history. Sorry, can she make copies on yours?
I'm sorry.
Could she make some more copies of those?
Uh, I can print them off the email.
Okay.
I can all in print, I can't copy them, but, yes.
Okay.
I'd say five.
Yeah, I know for a lot of years, the county relied really heavily on the three nineteen money for West Mountain Road. So that not only could we go in and recover it, but widen and build a base and put in the felt and, and I was really hoping we could keep going with that till we got that all the way through, at least to Tamrec. Now the issue that's poked up this year because, or the last few years because of the S bridge and the limitations with that, we're trying to find another route out of Tamrec north, whether that's, um, oh man, I just went like Swine. There's only one or two more bridges across the river there to get you back to the highway and Smiley.
Smiley.
Smiley. But the road's going to Smiley, we're gonna need some work too. And it's like, oh my gosh, we're so far behind, we'll never catch up.
That's a, that's a long ways, Smiley down there. Fishing Bridge, Tamrec.
It is. But if we lose the S bridge or, you know, which we've had a lot of crashes on it.
Yeah, you have to go with Smiley.
We're not thinking of today, we're thinking of twenty years from now.
Down the road, yeah.
That's a, isn't that still a snowmobile route?
Hmm.
No, it's not. It used to be.
It used to be, yeah, no.
Where do you want me to?
I took his copy, so I'll give you back yours.
Oh, I get it.
If I print it, you can go ahead and pin that down.
Sure.
So all that is, is a list of the grants that we have, the projects we have going on and the dollar amount, um, in grant funding that we require to do those projects. And with that, um, it's not just the grant funds that we actually receive to distribute to the different landowners. It's also the match that we're able to, the district is somewhat unique in getting that match generated through volunteer efforts. We have a lot, we have a great volunteer group that participates with us, including the supervisors on these resource projects. So the cloud seeding came about from those workshops that we held off of the summit, the water operation work groups, because we were, um, IDWR was coming to those meetings and Idaho Power was attending those meetings that were over, that we held over at the EOC. And that topic came up, that they're, they've gone through this study and have, have looked at expanding that program and that we were a natural step. And were we interested in exploring it? So that's when we very first brought it to you, was just the exploration process of that. Um, and then as we moved in and acquired that, um, Quomp grant, then they were very interested in participating with us because we had that planning grant. So it's just something for us to explore. Um, and water quantity does fall under our, our charge. And so we felt like it's a perfect opportunity for us to bring in the education resources and help educate everyone. I think that's something that the district does for the county is bring in those technical scientific resources to help educate. And they see conservation districts as a natural place to begin that process because that's the work we do.
So we've started seeing some comments on some of our subdivision activity. Oil, septic, that within your purview?
Water quantity.
Water quantity.
Water quality.
Isn't that from Idaho Department of Water Resources? They are our technical experts in that area and our engineer.
Yes, but we've actually worked with them, you know, they only have a limited number of, uh, monitoring wells in this valley.
Okay, getting more, that'd be very helpful.
Right, and, uh, actually Judy was working on that, uh, rounded up some, I mean, she talked to the folks that, that were in charge of the wa, uh, well monitoring department. And, uh, they had some suggestions as to, or requests as to where it would be most valuable to have, uh, monitoring wells. So that's in the, that's, the ball's rolling, it's going.
This is my concern and I'll just put it on the table so we can all have an open conversation. Um, we have to make decisions. I'm a very data-driven person. Give me the science behind it, give me the scientists that did the work. And so when I get a board, it's an advisory board giving me information, give me the science behind it, give me the science, scientist that did the work. IDWR is tasked with the state for certain things. And so I, I think we just have to, I just don't want there to be, at any moment in time, where when we're provided information, I have to question where that information came from. Because then I can't make science-based decisions. I don't want them to be emotions and I don't want them to be coming from individuals that don't have the scientific expertise to give them to me. And I'm just gonna play it, just like that. As an elected official, I have to, all my decisions are hard decisions. And the science behind it is what helps me make good qualified decisions. That's all I'm asking, that when you guys bring us something, first of all, the cloud seeding, you guys saw my frustration right up front. It was like, who's asking us to do this? Where's this information from? So when you're bringing it, make sure you bring the agency behind it or the science behind it with it.
Well, I felt like we did do that by bringing Kayla Golden. I mean, they're, they're interested in pursuing this because they're having so many requests now from counties, um, inquiring and wanting to, because of the water shortages that they've begun to experience, want to explore cloud seeding. And they feel that this county is the natural first step to kind of figure out how they're going to present this to other counties or how they're gonna work it out. There is some feasibility studies that are required, um, and that is something that could.
Meeting though, that was the second meeting. The first meeting, it came from you guys, and was here, we need to do this. And then we followed up with other people coming into the meetings.
Well, it began with Kayla, Kayla Golden and IDWR.
Second meeting.
But I think, I think cloud seeding is in our future and it should be because where I'm coming from is what we call the salmon flush. They want more money later on in the summer for salmon flushing, it's gotta be cold water. To me, that makes sense, well, let's do more cloud seeding, build Deadwood. We know we're not gonna get that benefit in this drainage, but the next drainage over, which is gonna end up in the same river, is gonna, is gonna supplement that. Fish flush, so why not cloud seed more and put more snow over there?
And actually, they do that in the Deadwood drainage because, uh, it's Idaho Power.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Go right down to Black Canyon, right on down the system, yep.
That's all we needed, was IDWR here and Idaho Power here, and saying, this is why we're doing this.
Yeah.
The conversation just didn't get started correctly, but.
And you know, actually Pam worked for Idaho Power as a water quality or water quantity planner and also for, and prior to that, for the state.
IDWR as an engineer.
She, she's been in both places. She, she started at, IDWR was there for many, many years and then I think the last, say, ten years, she was at Idaho Power, doing much the same. So she's quite a, she's quite well-informed anyway, but, yeah, no, it's good to hear.
Then it becomes just a personal request if she's just sitting out on board, she's not representing the industry.
Uh, no, she's retired, she's completely, she's, she's just trying to get this, this concept out and why, you know, that it does work and has worked. Traditionally, of course, this valley's had lots of water, but over thirty years.
This year, I think we will do. That was a bad conversation for this year. It's like, no, don't give me any more snow.
It's just sort of like every, you know, they, the average is based on the last thirty years. And the average of the last thirty years keeps going trending down. So it's, it's a tool. So, it's, it's a tool. And I think that the message was, if you get all your ducks in a row now, the next time there's a problem or there's a, you know, it looks like we're gonna be really short, and it's there, you just say, have it.
And I think the last station that got put in required a CUP. I'm assuming that you guys will be going through that, or...
Well, yeah, I mean, I think everything requires that, a CUP, but I think it would be up to us specifically. We're not the ones building it.
Okay, it'd be Idaho Power.
It's Idaho Power and then the county has, and I don't know what, what it costs, but there's always a cost involved in all this stuff. Do you have any of that information?
Well, the cost, the initial cost is the feasibility study, which can...
But to maintain the, the equipment and all that is...
No, I have no information on that.
The county has to pay a certain amount.
You're paying now to maintain?
I don't think so.
No, not now, but if they were to build new sites, that was part of that discussion, is that there may be some cost here from the county to do this.
Yeah.
So, and all, all that was intended with that initial first meeting with Pam Pace, because she is an associate to the board now and was beginning to talk about that water quantity issue, along with water quality, because that's what the reservoir needs, is water quantity and old water,
Yeah.
was just to initiate that conversation. And then the next step was bringing in Kayla and then Sean, and just beginning that dialogue. So, we had no, you know, there was no action item with that, but, and no intention other than beginning the education process.
Yeah, I think that would be something the commissioners would decide at some point, because now you have the information. I don't think, you have to take this conservation district pushing a project on you, because it's not like that.
And I don't look at it that way at all, Judy, I think it's more of a priority for what money you have to work with every year. Every year you have so many dollars that you can fly around and, and you're done. And so you have to pick and choose which is more supposed to work.
So it's an attractive area for expansion for IDWR and Idaho Power. And so, and then combined with the fact that we got this planning grant from USBR, we have some resources we can put towards potentially applying for a grant that would cover a feasibility study, if we wanted, if the county so choose to move forward on it. So, it's, it's kind of, things have just fallen in place with that and, you know, no action item has been taken on this, other than a letter of interest.
Do you have any idea, Dorena, what that study would cost?
They, it, there's a wide range, and so we haven't even explored that yet. But they, they could cost from fifty thousand to four hundred thousand. So, depending on the complexity and what they're trying to accomplish. But I really don't know, I don't have that, I'm not the one that knows.
Well, and a lot of times you're gonna find users downstream will pay for that.
Right.
Because now they don't have to buy storage, they can just keep out on pumping and the water's there, so.
Yeah, they don't have to rent water if it gets really low and if there's water to rent, that's the other issue.
It is tied in with that, the USBR grant, and they have further grants that us having this and doing a planning coalition opens up those other grants that we could apply for through USBR, because they need a healthy reservoir. So, and especially this last year where we affected Horseshoe Bend's drinking water, everything's becoming a little more critical.
There's a lot of people are, I'm really glad I'm at the top of the hill right now. This all comes off, we're gonna have some clean water coming out of them, but it's gonna be a lot of it.
We're not trying to push anything, it just came through us, I think through that summit that Governor Little participated in and, and there's interest in this watershed, because we are at the top of the watershed. So, it just seemed like a natural extension of, we had the professional scientific people that were, we were associating with through the summit, through the water operation work group, and that they were attending our board meetings and presenting that information and we wanted to get that to you and that was the first step.
I'm sorry, I, I just didn't take it that way. So there wasn't, there just wasn't good communication that first meeting, so I apologize, because it kind of, it was just a natural, what's going on? That way, it was just maybe not communicated well. And I will take that, yeah, I'll take that on me too, because that's why I reached out right after that going, what's happening? What's going on here?
I think that was part of the reason that we would, we'd like to have this meeting is to dial, open up the dialogue or make sure it's going good between the two boards and stuff. And one of the questions that we had or we talked about is, how often would you like us to appear before you, kind of let you know what's going on, or you've got questions that you can ask us and then we need to follow through on, on our end too? So, that's kind of the gist, I think, of this whole thing, we just make sure we're...
And then you know what, I would like to see you guys more often, and that's my fault, because as a commissioner, one of us is supposed to be going to your meetings. And it's like, I know everything they do, I don't need to go, man. I mean, it's, it's my fault.
He's on your board now.
And I don't worry about you guys, it's easy peasy.
We try to be careful not to over, overappear to wear out our welcome. So, anytime you have questions, we're happy to come and have this kind of dialogue. This is super helpful to us too, so.
Get on it.
And I hope we get maybe today, I think we've run out of hours already, but I would like to get into some, maybe a little different discussion about, we have some issues up here. One of them being the McCall sewer system and what it's doing to our lake. And what do we have to do or what can we do, because we're not experts, to get that fixed? Honestly, that's the short answer to it. And we heard the other day at your meeting, very educational, where the issues are and what the problem really is. And to me, that's where we need to focus as commissioners, we need to fix this problem, because you're messing everybody up further down the line.
And that was another example of DEQ and the sewer district coming to our district to say, are you willing to participate with us to help solve some of these issues with offset projects? How can we work together? So, we, we...
What is that conversation? Have you heard about that one?
Well, the, the storage pond has been leaking for several years and it's a fairly substantial leak.
Are they actually stating that that's happening now, because they've denied it for a long time?
Yes, yes. And so it's at the point where they're being told it needs to be fixed, it needs to be fixed now.
Are they still pumping that out onto farmers' land?
Yes, J ditch, you know, they used to put it on J ditch and a dilute solution. And that sunsetted, I don't know, five or six years ago. And they started a, a whole new pipeline delivery to Mackey Ranch.
It's actually reused to Betis and Mackey.
Oh, and Betis. I just, anyway. But it's a hundred percent because of...
It's not diluted.
Not diluted, it's a hundred percent and that's because the rules changed. They used to allow dilute, or they made a special case for dilute pollution. It was one part of effluent, I think there are three parts, ditch water. Which incidentally, the ditch water was probably had more, depending on the time here, had more bacteria in it than the actual treated effluent. But that would just be bacterial element in the water. Anyway, they made it so that the same rules applied whether it was dilute or if it was a hundred percent, as far as setbacks from existing waterways, roads and drainage ways. So, it didn't matter, it's, so you can...
But it's much more monitored now.
It is.
DEQ monitors it.
They have monitoring wells. It wasn't monitored really at all.
Good things.
Yeah, so it's more, it's concentrated, it's in a smaller area and it's all on, like, two different landowners have it, so.
So what are they gonna do about the leak?
That's what they're trying to...
They're trying to come up with a plan.
They're trying to come up with a plan. And they're also asking the district if there's any way we can help out on some of the offsets. Because they may, they have to do something with that water in the meantime, until we can get it fixed. Asking us if there's any, if we know of anything, or if we can help them figure out how to, you know, offset what may, may go into the river with some of the other projects to compensate for that.
Us first, so we're looking to...
It's a big, it's a big issue for them.
Yeah, it's a big issue.
It's a big issue.
It's like a transfer site, you got a problem. Our, our transfer site's a lot easier than this problem, I don't know how they're gonna figure this one out. That's a tough one.
And I, I think you need to share how many gallons they were...
I think it was twenty-five.
Twenty-five million gallons, if I remember correctly, a year. Going where?
Straight into the river?
No, I, it's, I filed it in my...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a huge amount.
It's a huge number.
Like eight-hundred-and-fifty CFS. I mean, it's a lot.
Well, and fortunately, maybe unfortunately for the folks in McCall, but fortunately DEQ and EPA have come out and said that you can't do that anymore, you have to fix this. And I think, you know, there, there's gonna be some, obviously some federal funds come down to help them get it started, or at least get going on it, but I think they're finally pushing hard, that hard, that you guys gotta fix this, you can't let this go on and on and, and it's gonna be challenging. But that's one issue that I think the county, we need to all concentrate on and watch. What's another one you guys feel like is a big issue? Is it too, lake use, boat use, too many people?
South Lake Sewer District.
South Lake Sewer District.
South Lake Sewer, okay, that's number two.
So my question for you guys on that, because it was an EPA mandate, that's how all these sewer districts were created. So if there was an EPA mandate, there was not any funding behind it. There's no way to go after to try and satisfy a EPA mandate?
You know, I wish Leonard was here to answer that question, because he would know what it would, you know, what is to hold up on that, other than money?
It's money, I've been talking to their board, you know, and I've actually reached out to City of Cascade. I mean, that would be the natural fit, if we could figure out a way to combine City of Cascade and South Lake Sewer. And South Lake Sewer's interested, I have not heard back from the City of Cascade after a couple of requests, but I, I don't know that there's, you know, I think that that's probably a natural fit some way, but City of Cascade doesn't want to put that cost on the back of their taxpayers. And so how do you, I think we need to go out after the EPA some way and say, you mandated this, where's federal funding behind it?
Yeah, that's it.
And I, I look at Avamoor being a good example, it's like that, cost of that sewer treatment facility was put on the developer and it hasn't slowed them down whatsoever. So monetarily, I don't think it, it might have hurt a little bit, but I think that has to be considered in, in, the growth that's happening right now is how we could...
Well, so if you look at that, I've spent a lot of time on this issue because of the Lake Fork site. So, Jug was mandated to do that, John did a great job. They have very clear water, actually goes into the creek. However, in today's world, EPA would never even approve that. So, these systems, I mean Blackhawk has a system, I'm trying to think where the other systems are around there.
Whitehall, that one? Does Whitehall have their own sources?
They're on, they're on city.
Cities, yeah.
Somewhere else there.
So we do have some of those. There was an engineer here from Montana that talked about maybe not doing huge sewer systems, that they become more centralized, based.
Subdivision-based.
The problem with that is, there has to be density to do it. That has to move so much effluent through the systems in order to actually make them function correctly. So, if we're gonna go out into the county, you gotta have density, which is what we're hearing people don't want in the county. But, I mean, in order, in order to have those systems, you have to have more on them. I mean Jug has sent it, you know, five hundred permits, Blackhawk probably has three-hundred-and-fifty or four-hundred permits on it. I mean, there has to be a high-density level to get that type of thing. As a home builder, I use the anaerobic sites, because they could be within eighteen inches of water base. State did away with the anaerobics, and so now there's nobody to actually monitor those anaerobic systems. So there's, septic is a large conversation for all of us. I mean, it's, it's great, we need to do this, but how do we do it and do it environmentally friendly, while making it, first of all, function correctly, you don't want one failing? Secondly, some type of cop, you know, cost prohibitive is the one out here that South Lake's like announced, a fifteen-million-dollar plant at minimum. You're gonna put that on a taxpayer somewhere.
Can't do it with a volunteer board either.
You can't, no. So, trying to, you know, create that, that's, that's great input. So right now, honestly, with the problems that McCall is having with their sewers, driving growth to the county, it's driving into other se- sewer entities.
Well, it's driving into the Donnel area, because they have capacity.
Right.
I don't know, we, you know, you see a lot of times, you'll see people that'll, like a one-on-one with Mountain, will apply for that little stream of water. And to me, I think, you know, they, you, nobody should touch that water, should make it clear to the lake, because that's the only cold, clean water that's coming in from that side. But they still get water rights out of it.
That's what is real puzzlement to me, is that they still keep handing out water rights when almost everything is spoken for. Emmett, that's why they're doing this, this assessment up here this year, I mean, that's just the start of it.
Sherry, are you aware of that, the summer assessment?
They're gonna, the Neil Shippey is coming up from Idaho Department of Water Resources and doing an assessment of Gold Fork, Willow Creek and Mud Creek.
And Clear Creek.
Okay, not Willow Creek.
Clear Creek.
Yeah, Gold Fork, Clear Creek. Of the users that pull water directly out of the creek itself, river rights is what they call it.
Irrigation purposes or for domestic water sources?
Yes. No, it'd be not, not domestic, but just strictly irrigation. Because it's such a mishmash, you know, you, if you have an irrigation district or an irrigation company, they're fairly well, keep, you know, tabs on their water where it goes if you have. But these river rights are a little less regulated and have always been actual. Whereas, some people say they're kind of cowboy. They're not very well-regulated. And so, because they had such a shortage down in the valley, people utilized paid river water. They put a lot of pressure on IDWR to come up here and take a look at that, try to clean it up. Get some water measurement devices up there and keep track of this water a little better.
Because the water users in the Emmett Valley are senior water users, so they could call their water and then it would not be available to the users up here.
We had to chuckle over an email last year, because we got emailed, why are you taking the water out of the reservoir? The voters are not done voting yet. Do you remember that? It was, that's not our water, that's our nation, that's our nation water.
And most of the water rights up here junior to the water rights down below, so.
Most people don't understand that their water is owned by somebody other than Valley County.
Well, and I think, you know, just like the Boise Valley, I had friends that lived down there that were on the canal and every once a week on Friday, they got two hours worth of water, just flooded their whole yard. And I thought, that seems such a waste of water. That's not really a beneficial use to irrigate somebody's lawn with it, but they still, they still get it.
Yeah, and they're, they're, they're talking about, the state itself is talking about that, that is the homeowner's exemption to, you know, they get enough water, they're guaranteed, either it be groundwater or surface water, a certain amount of water... either it be groundwater or surface water, a certain amount of water for, I think, a quarter acre. If you have five acres, you're guaranteed enough for your quarter-acre lawn and garden and whatnot. But in several areas of the state, that is no longer working. There it just isn't, the water.
Southeast Idaho, Commissioner.
Southeast Idaho, exactly. An amazingly complex system they have down there where they actually have, they gave out, the state of Idaho kind of got ahead of themselves and gave out a lot more water rights than they should have, especially for groundwater pumping. So rather than just inconvenient, inconvenience, any of the irrigators that had taken that water, they tried to come up with a method to do it, which was to, all winter long, they take water and, out of the snake, basically drain the snake in different sections and pump it back into the ground. And use the ground as another reservoir. That's all they're doing, it's just turning all that underground lava tubes and whatnot that underlie the Snake River Plain into a great big underground reservoir. But they've, they brought it up quite a bit. It's not anywhere near where it used to be.
I think an interesting conversation for all of us could be, so the county is looking at, how do we take our woody biomass and create a product that either is, you know, sustainable, instead of just burning, you know, how do, how do we do something different? So we've been looking into tub grinders. But one of the things with tub grinders is putting it back onto the soil. And so you take this product and you sell it to the farmers and let them till it in. Might be an interesting conversation to have with you guys. I don't know if that's a, something that would be within your purview. But creating, I've never, I, I never was able to get on your soils map either. That totally is, it's a hard map to get to somewhere.
The NRCS.
It's slow, it's slow, it takes a lot of computer.
Takes a lot of memory, yeah. Because that's, I was trying to figure out, where are our highest soil values in the county? You know, where do we maybe need to work with a landowner and say, you know, "You've got really rich soil here, what plan or whatever?"
You know, that's a very, and it's fairly subjective, but the way I look at it, in this value-
Well, you can always improve soil.
Yeah, you can always improve soil.
Lots of people have improved their soil wonderfully.
The way I look at what is, you know, the most valuable soil is under irrigation. And if it has a good irrigation district or supply, then why jeopardize that? I mean, that would be, like, Lake Irrigation District has excellent water, even during the drought, always has water. Because we have storage. Most places that have sufficient storage have, you can produce a lot. Most of, you know, I think the major factor here is climate. We're all subject to the same climate. So it comes down to, how much water do you have? How long can you use it in the season? And if you've got a system that uses it efficiently. You know, like if there's pipeline and sprinklers. Of course, there's places down where they subirrigate, that seems to be, like, the most economical way to do it, in my mind, but that's-
You know, like in my case, years back in the eighties, early eighties. And, and it's the same thing with roads up here, but any distance runs east and west is gonna cut, it's gonna get deeper and deeper and deeper every year. And we literally had ditches that I could stand in, you couldn't see out of. And so we went through the NRCS and we designed a mainline system and we buried everything in a pipe, and we saved a hundred-and-twenty thousand tons of soil a year and all that kind of stuff. And then the next step was to do a pivot. So that, and it's all gravity-fed, so there wasn't any pumping costs. But my family didn't like the look of pivots. And I can irrigate, subirrigating faster than I can with a pivot. And do it once or twice a year and then I'm done. So it's, it's a matter of preference. But a pivot works much better for grain crops, legumes, that kind of stuff, versus subirrigation works better for grass hay and that kind of stuff. So it's depending what you're growing, what you're doing out there.
Our eighty acres, we did it all in tubes. I got to be very good doing irrigation.
Siphon tubes?
Siphon tubes.
John, have you heard anything about the type of BMP project that Sherry was talking about? The, what did you call it?
Limo Mask.
Uh-huh. So it's an actual NRCS?
It was looked at five years ago.
We had a whole study done on that.
A whole study done on it, and it basically came down to saying that it's not feasible. The return back is not there because the fuel's not twenty dollars a gallon or whatever, you know, it is like that. So it wasn't, it's not feasible. It, whether it would, things have changed that enough now, I, I still don't quite think it is. The woodland, the woodland soils will probably be even better than a lot of the soils that are out on the farmland. But that's because they get a lot of that material returned back. And if it doesn't, you're going through doing this fire mitigation work, domestication stuff, at least that stuff gets put back into the soil, that's what helps return the nutrients back into the soil and stuff. So, you know, if you're gonna be starting to take it out of woods, to do something out there, then you might be losing.
Well, that's why I've always been kind of against controlled burns. Forest Service does about a, over half a million acres a year in controlled burns throughout the state. And to me, it's like, I don't know, I would rather risk that burning up than to burn it up every year and not have to go back in the soil. I think that's, that's-
There's, yeah, there's-
There's a lot of-
Yeah, good, good things and bad things about that. Because that's, you know, still returning the nutrients back to the soil, just in a little different, short, it's more of a short-term goal than it is a long-term goal.
Our conversation is on, where it's feasible for the open market. We know that it's not, it's not cost-effective to do that. Our problem is, is that the MRF only has so many acres up there.
I know, I know where you're coming from, yeah.
The woody biomass, and also, we used to be able to burn the construction debris pile. We can't do that any longer. We've gotta do something else with it. So now it becomes, what is the best use of a product? And how can we, you know, less utilize it? Because we gotta do something with it, not just do the same thing that we used to do, so.
So, yeah. So if you actually put it in a tub grinder and then, I mean, what's the, if you can't burn it, then it's gotta be transported somewhere or just stored on your site?
Through the landfill and buried. That's where construction, here we go. If we chipped it, we'd go to the landfill and pay it and be buried.
If you chipped it.
We can do it whole now, but the issue we have now is that it's so big that it's hard to haul it in those trucks with the walking floors. This stuff gets jammed up in there and then they have to drive all the way back here and fix it and unjam it and then load it up again and go back down. And so we've tried to institute some rules at the MRF that you gotta cut stuff up in smaller pieces. You can't put whole walls in and that kind of a deal, but.
We're out of time.
Yeah, we're out of time, about twenty minutes ago.
But we didn't even talk about a five-year plan.
And I'm willing to go another ten minutes, if you can do it in ten minutes, let's do it.
Talk for five years.
Well, I, I think this is just an opportunity for you to look at, this is an annual report we have to submit to the commission every year. Covers a lot of ground. If there's specific things that you have questions on, you know, maybe we could address those through a board meeting?
My only question is, do you think EQIP will ever come back to the funding levels that it used to be? I know you said to me the other day that they took roads quarter out of it now, and it's like, dang.
But you used to do the roads through EQIP?
No, it'd be three-nineteen.
Three-nineteen, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we would go down there and plead our case, and they always like-
Give us flack about the roads, but we try to always frame it as water quality. I mean, it's just directly affecting-
Exactly, and so we got the money. But it was, we did get the word that they weren't going to do that anymore.
Well, we have, in that list that's provided there, we do, the next, Jeff just finished up, Quinzer. And that was for forty thousand that we were able to contribute towards that project. And then the next one is Gibson Creek. And we'll keep including them. They've changed their application process where they're not doing those bundled grants. So all the, there's the, for example, the six-nine-six and the six-oh-two that's on that list, those are several projects bundled altogether. So now they're breaking it down even further and they don't, their preference is to not have those bundled applications. So it's project by project, which, that's really tedious.
But you can see on this list how much stuff these guys have done.
Well, that's all current, that's not in the past even, that's what we have currently.
Going right now.
Yep.
And the only one I had a question on is, what's six-nine-six? What was that program, what was that?
That was through three-nineteen DEQ.
For what string though, I mean, what'd you guys do?
North Fork Payette River, we did, it was here. So the six-nine-six included the Alzar Bank restoration.
Oh, that's them down, whoa, oh, okay. That's what I was trying to figure, what, what did you guys do? Strand excess and the Payette River hundreds.
Yeah, and they just allocated, you know, about thirty thousand to all of those projects because most of that's just labor. Nineteen plants, the cost is not that great with it.
Volunteer.
Volunteer labor.
So it's in kind.
Maybe you guys could come back in a couple of weeks. I do have questions. I don't think it's an issue. I know you guys have discussed the house and, you know, the greater conversation coming. So we need to hear from you guys. We definitely got one. So we need to protect, the same thing we need to help our employees. So how can we help support, you know? And that's a greater conversation, I'm pretty there. We need to figure that out.
Well, the way to solve that is to find another spot that you give as much value or more than you're getting now.
We can't get more, we're receiving the maximum value. So they changed how they would allow that from how they did it years ago. So what we, what we're taking on our match report now is the maximum we can get. If you give us more cash, we get more money. I don't think we could, the district doesn't have the funds to pay for our own rent.
And we're not, I'm not even suggesting that, but I mean, like, we do have space available in other areas. You know, we need to help support and, I mean, there's, there's other opportunities. We can talk about that. And if it's, you know, half does on one or the other, we need, we need the house. Because that's someplace we can put an employee. Versus, I mean, if we have to do more cash, then that's a whole different conversation to have. We wanna make sure that you guys are retained here in Valley County, we don't wanna lose you. But at the same time, we have to make sure our assets are being utilized the way they should be utilized. We could have public-
I'll have to get that military part, we're just-
We've got the EOC if you guys need for public meetings. I mean, there's, there's lots of opportunities for different ideas. So we need to have that conversation. So maybe in a couple of weeks, we can get back together again and have that conversation, but.
And using the EOC, that qualifies for match every time, so I count that as a hundred-and-seventy-five dollars a use.
Have you guys looked at the Lake Fork shop, been in there with that?
I've been in there when I worked for Extension. Because that conversation was, we went up and looked at that. So I, I'm familiar with the space.
Hey, well, thank you guys for coming in.
So if you have a chance to look at the five-year, any questions? And then we could maybe go over that budget and the match? Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for the conversation, allowing me to be mean. I can't do that, allowing open conversations.
And then I add up how much color copy I do over here, and all those little things, but that adds up.
We'll work with a number, let's, let's look at it.
And I have a dollar amount, I do remember it off the top of my head, the match amounts, not that much.
Letter of intent to approve the- The way our property is, you're watching that, and know it has some high property, then there's a low.
Okay, thank you.
Metamorphosis.
There you go.
Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you.
Very good. We started getting a little lake, but that was too much water, it was flooding. You can come a fire hose, so much to learn. And it's like, that's why I'm doing a lot of listening.
They have some issues with that, because I have a few things up next to it.
No, chart of accounts for all the tile, so. So I'm just trying to start completing something. First time I've had ditch water, been around you guys, to see what you guys do. There's just tons to learn.
Oh, my goodness.
For sure. Sorry, dude.
Start with a two-year, you can just figure out what you're doing and then you gotta run for rent.
So there's, there's some-
What happens with Harry, if Harry bids?
Why not?
You gonna keep going there?
Well, somebody will end up with that land, but will they be? But there's no guarantee that-
There's no guarantee that the air forgets that.
What else do we need to vote?
We've had that discussion a lot.
Conversation about-
You guys get insurance, but-
Houses and rent are now.
Yes, yes.
We'll have to talk to Gabby about it.
But anyway, that's why I didn't do it.
See, I think that from the feedback we're getting from employees, they're trying to come back down. See what that plan comes forward with. That that particular organization came into fruition to kind of mirror general. I'm not sure, that is rumor that may or may not be true, it's just something that I surmise. Fine, I'll go make a copy.
You don't have a copier? I wanna write with this and a copy.
Very happy with my printer, Sherry.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And Will, and Will is like that, soon as he sees-
Shouldn't have been out of session.
He shuts his pivot off.
That's nice.
Yeah.
That's a good neighbor there.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep, see ya. Okay, folks, are we back on? I guess we're never, we're, our next agenda is that, is an executive session and then we will be closing for the, after that, at the end of the day. So we'll see everybody here maybe next week.
Need to make a motion.
And we need a motion to go into Executive Peridot Code two-oh-six-one-B.
We go into executive session, Peridot Code seventy-four-two-oh-six-one-B, to consider an evaluation.
Second, in a second, my roll call, please.
Listen, I.
Mop and I.
And Hesbrook, I and Doug are in at three-twenty-nine.